Attending our, I think, second annual town plan and educational session. Just give us a couple of minutes to get the rest of the setup done and we'll be kicking off shortly.
And it's recorded on community television.
Yeah, so I think we're good, Tom. Okay. Why don't we go ahead and open the discussion with Tom? Tom, you want to, Tom Irwin?
Tom Irwin.
Do you want to start with your presentation? You want to kick us off with that? Tom, do you have other members of the Green Committee with you tonight? Do you have other members of the Green Committee with you tonight?
Tony.
Tony, okay. Say, hey, Tony. So for the folks in the audience and for the folks at home, we're going to spend a few minutes of this quick presentation by the Dalton Green Committee about preparing for the future, the needs and benefits of a climate action roadmap. So there's a lot of activity happening at the state level and the federal level and things that we need to begin to think about or plan for. So this is just kind of introduction to that roadmap idea, I guess, and some other tidbits and education, and then we'll get into the warrant after that, so.
Thank you, Joe. Good evening. For those of you who may not know me, I am Tom Irwin, a member of the Dalton Green Committee. On behalf of the Dalton Green Committee, we thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation, which will introduce the need for and the benefits of Climate Action Roadmap, also known as a Climate Action Plan. We believe this is an essential tool to make possible Dalton preparing for the challenges of the impending climate change crisis. So what is climate change? As we are all aware, burning fossil fuels continues to add to the total carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, the major greenhouse gas. More greenhouse gases means increases in temperatures and large changes in weather patterns. Why worry? It is well-accepted that a rise in average global temperature of 1.5 degrees C is the threshold where areas of the tropics become, which is home to 3 billion people, will become uninhabitable. And a rise to 2 degrees C will make the tropics largely uninhabitable, causing a massive humanitarian crisis, 300 times worse than the refugee crisis of the Ukraine war. So where do we stand now? As of 2022, the Earth is 1.1 degrees C above the pre-industrial 1880 level and is rising at 2.2 degrees every 20 years, which means in 2043, we will be at 1.5 degrees C, or above the 1880 levels. So what are some of the developing dangers? More frequent and longer heat waves, increased drought durations and severity, which ultimately will lead to increased food costs, increased storm intensities with more than, with greater number of inches per hour of rain, 100-year flooding occurring at least every 25 years, rising sea levels with sunny day flooding and severe coastal damage, and, as we've In June of 2022, the Massachusetts State prepared the Clean Energy and Climate Plan that set the 2025 greenhouse gas reduction target at 33% and increased the 2030 greenhouse gas reduction from 45 to 50%. These measures were deemed necessary based on the rapid changes that have occurred in the last few years. The chart above presents the current target emissions reduction level, which are quite aggressive, and achieving them will require significant amounts of state and federal This graph makes clear why, although those goals are aggressive, there is no other choice and the margins for error are very slim. The top red line shows greenhouse emissions growing at their pre-COVID rate, with 2 degrees C being reached before 2060. The flat red line is where countries continue to decarbonize at an annual rate that meets their current baseline commitments, which will reach 20 degrees, or 2 degrees C above the 1880 levels around 2060. The green downsloping line assumes a 25% reduction by 2030 and zero net by 2070. Clearly, we must achieve net zero before 2070 to limit the population migrations. The dark green downsloping line assumes a 50% reduction by 2030 and net zero by 2050, which avoids all population migrations. The overall message: To save our planet, we must achieve net zero before 2070. Question is, how do we do this? How does Dalton do this? We need a strategic plan. We need a realistic strategy to get us to net zero in 2050. It will need to consider the needs and issues of all groups of residents. It will require a lot from us, but without a well-thought-out strategy, getting closer to 50% reduction in just seven years and to net zero in 27 years will be absolutely impossible. Is a Climate Action Plan actually recommended? Well, the state and federal government strongly encourage having a Climate Action Plan. Any state or federal grant, which we rely on heavily, always wants to know how the proposed project and the requested grant monies fit the town's environmental plan. All sustainability directors that I have spoken with, and these are the managers of climate change preparedness in towns and cities, consider a Climate Action Plan absolutely indispensable. Of note, the UN has a Climate Plan, the US has a Climate Plan, our state has a Climate Plan, and several towns around us have Climate Plans, but those plans are not tailored to Dalton and our needs and priorities are different. How does Dalton develop a Climate Action Plan? Well, the first thing we need to do is make sure we retain the services of a consultant with subject matter expertise and a proven ability to facilitate group discussions, and there are several. As the first step in creating the plan, the consultant establishes our baseline based on data we provide, and from this data, the consultant will provide an initial report. We will then use this report to create fact sheets, a presentation, and surveys with the aim of effectively reaching out and obtaining input from as many Dalton residents and businesses as possible. These tools will be created with the guidance of the consultant's experienced facilitators. Following this, with these tools in hand, the Dalton Action Plan Team volunteers, and hopefully there will be many, will distribute the fact sheets to inform the public and gather surveys from them to learn the opinions and needs of residents and businesses. This information will be used by our consultants to develop a set of strategies that will be reviewed by Dalton stakeholders and become the final set of priorities and action items for our town. The last step to developing a plan is to develop a plan for each action item. The action items will be broken down into sub-items. Timelines will be developed and agreed on. Volunteers will be identified and sources of funding will be identified. The result: Dalton's Climate Action Plan. What are the benefits of this, of an action roadmap? Having an action plan or roadmap significantly improves Dalton's chances of receiving the substantial state and federal funding we will absolutely need, versus to the tune of several million dollars. Having a plan that is widely accepted and where we know what we need and when we need it will increase our rates of achieving goals on time and on budget. It will also enhance our awareness so we identify grant opportunities and obtain grants that fit our long-term plans. And lastly, having a plan with this depth and breadth improves the town's financial planning and master plan, which only increases the probability we will reach our goals. In summary, every town, not just Dalton, should be doing this, must do this. When Dalton does this, as we must, Dalton may, if we are lucky, be the catalyst and model that inspires and helps our neighbors follow suit. Ultimately, our important step may result in assuring the Berkshires does its part on time and successfully gains the needed control over our climate change that we need, as is our goal, and save the planet as we know it for ourselves and future generations. Thank you for considering this proposal, and please vote in favor of Article 20, which we're asking $60,000. And if you wish a copy of this PowerPoint, please email me and I'll be more than happy to send you a copy. Thank you for your attention.
And Tom, we'd be happy to put a copy on the website as well, if it's not already there, for sure.
Not a problem. We'll take care of that.
And thank you for that great presentation. Any questions for Tom? And this again goes to Article 20 on the town warrant for a request of $60,000?
$60,000.
$60,000 for the roadmap program. Okay. Great. Thank you. Tom, yep. Sure, just make sure you step up to a mic over there or, yep.
And just say your name, Tony.
Sure.
Hello. My name's Tony Pagliurlo. I'm on the Green Committee and I'm a resident of Dalton for a good many years. I just want to get back to something that you said, Joe, earlier in terms of events moving very quickly. Events are moving very quickly. Our federal government has a roadmap, our state has a roadmap, and we're encumbered to have a roadmap. No one is the smartest person in this room. The consultancy will allow, as Tom mentioned, stakeholders input into their future, to be invested and have skin in the game. We know solar is coming on rooftops. I think Dalton may be a candidate for that in terms of their properties or buildings. Who knows? Wind may be there. Battery storage may be something in the offing in terms of an emergency plan, and I would hope that this committee would consider any vehicles that Dalton purchased are going to be electric vehicles. That's a real, concrete step towards making us a green community, and it's the future. So I would hope that for this small amount of money, we're going to secure much more money in the future through grants and programs. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Maureen Mitchell. I just had a question. You said $60,000, Tom, in the warrant. It's $67,500.
Correct. The $60,000 is for the roadmap and $7,500 is for the climate change fair that will be held next April 19th at the stationary factory.
And do you have a consultant in mind, or is this something that goes out to bid?
I do. We, I have been working with a consultant, so I know that the number I'm suggesting to down is accurate, but we will indeed be going out to bid to assure that we're getting the best price.
So it's a competitive type piece?
It is. Typically, this project costs somewhere between $120,000 and $150,000. So the $60,000 price is where we put in more sweat and they just do a bit more guidance.
And does this include the distribution, the printing and?
Distribution of what, please?
You are going to devise the plan. You're going to put it on paper, on electronics. Is that included in that budget?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Pleasure. Anything else?
Any other questions? Great. Thank you again, Tom. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Are we good?
We've heard all presentations, and they're very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. To, Tom, if I may, I think we're just running a little bit behind, so I want to, out of respect to the audience that's here, is there any specific warrant article that's of interest to you that we'd like to go with first?
Yes.
Okay, just come on up to the mic and state the article and
I'll just.
And we can just check these off as we go.
And the very last article, would you take a look, or next to last article? Number 25?
Oh, yes.
All right, there's a number of us in this audience that have some opinions. This is to change the location of the town election voting from the Dalton CRA to the Dalton Senior Center. Now, I wear two hats. I'm a poll worker and I'm also on the board of the Senior Center in the Building Committee. And having experienced the people with disabilities voting at the Dalton CRA, it is a nightmare for some people to get in and out of that building to vote. And exiting the parking lot, you're taking your life in your hands. I recommend you make use of the beautiful, handicapped, accessible, easy parking, no danger Senior Center to do the voting. That's where the voting used to occur in Dalton when the old Dalton High School was there. So say people can't find it, us oldsters, we can find it. So I would like you to consider Article 25, and there's a few other people in the audience that want to share their opinion.
Out of the, you know, kind of the education side of this, because we're not taking formal votes, but the education side, what else do you see residents who are unable to vote because of the conditions of the CRA?
Indeed, the ramp situation in the back is a hazard for people in a walker or a wheelchair or whatever. Right now, the bathrooms are under renovation at the CRA. There's one available handicap bathroom for everybody, and so that for a current voting coming up pretty quick. I know that the parking situation is deadly. If you're trying to exit and you're vision impaired and it's getting dark, you're taking your life in your hands. So yes, I've seen that experience. People that do not park in the back try to negotiate those front stairs, and I mean, we've almost had people topple down the stairs where there is no handicapped access. So personally, I know that it's a convenient spot. People know where it is. I also know it's a hazardous spot.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments in this article or questions? Tony?
Just one comment in all deference to Tony Pagliurlo again, to Maureen. I agree with what Maureen's saying. However, I also know from personal experience that the location on Main Street has caused me to say, oh, it's voting day, and I know others have said that too. It's public. It's very public. If somehow there were signs or directions to the Senior Center, I'd say yes. And I still think the Senior Center in terms of accessibility is a good thing, but as a public location, the CRA has a lot to offer and it encourages voting and catches people. But no disagreement.
The Senior Center now has new signs directly.
Yep. So this will come up for our vote on town meeting. For the record, the Select Board did address this in one of our meetings to look at this specific article, and it voted in non-support of moving the location for three to one. So, but you know, make your argument at the town meeting and see what happens there.
What year was that vote taken by the Select Board?
This year. You were absent.
Okay. I was not there.
I'll give you the cover. Yeah. So it was three to one on that, and so, you know, bring up the discussions and make your arguments, make your pitches at town meeting, but I think the article is pretty clear. And it did come from a resident petition as well. So anybody can petition to put an article on the warrant, and this is one of those particular items. It's come up a couple of times in different town meetings, but can come up again because of the resident petition, so. Okay. Any other articles of interest? Okay. See you none. Tom, you want to walk us through the articles?
The first dozen or more articles are more or less standard. The first one sets the limits for the town's revolving funds. This is something that has to be reauthorized every year. We're not suggesting any change in any of these funds. These are funds that we spend money out of, but they get money back, which is why they're called revolving funds. And we have a number of them that will be laid out in the motions and explanations For example, the cemetery department has $2,500, and money comes into that from cemetery fees and it goes out of it for cemetery expenses, so. And there's actually two, one for, for different purposes for the cemeteries. Parks maintenance is the same. We have an agreement, inter-municipal agreement regarding a boom mower. That's a revolving fund as well that we get some money into, but then we spend it on the mower. So that's the sort of thing that that first one is about, but we do have to reauthorize those amounts every year. The authorization for them, rather. We don't necessarily spend all that money. We only spend what we get back, so that's not a, that's not a spending item. For Article 2, we set the compensation for the elected officials. This is just saying how much they get. Well, in the, in the next article, we vote on the actual operating budget, spending the money. Article 2 just says this is how much these elected officials will get, so that's, and those typically go up 2%, 3%, 4% per year, depending on what year and what the particular elected official is. Article 3 is the town operating budget article, and it includes this bit about sewer use fees, which is a little bit confusing, but it does mean that we can spend sewer use fees on sewer operations, which is very important. That's a great source of money for sewer operations. So we just have to mention it because it's a separate source of revenue from taxes. But this is the major town operating budget article. And I think you can see in the article and tax summary that that's $9,419,201. And just, just as a reminder, that's out of a total town budget of about $21 million. So less than half of the money goes to actual town operations as such. A lot of the other money goes to the schools and some of the other money goes for intergovernmental, paying Pittsfield for our sewer, that sort of thing. So Article 3 is the big town operating budget article.
Just on the school budget, really quick, Tom, and just for the folks here and folks at home, the increase compared to last year isn't bad. I think it was like 1.2%, but the state had significant additional sum of money coming in for schools that decreased that, that hit to the towns. Whether or not that additional money comes next year is questionable.
Very.
Right? So just keep in mind, we might see a clip up in that percentage increase with the schools next year, depending upon what happens with state funds. So get out to your state legislatures at the end of the day.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Article 4 is the school district, the Central Berkshire Regional School District. It's their operating budget. Like our operating budget is Article 3, the operating budget for the school is Article 4. Similarly, Article 5 is the transportation budget.
Can you just take yourself off mute on the Zoom? Get David there.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. David, can you hear us now?
Ah, we can't hear. Ah, you're on mute now. Sorry about that. And so Article 5 is the transportation budget of the school and Article 6 is the capital budget of the school, typically what they borrow money for. So we split up the three different segments of the school funding. That's how it's presented to us by the school. That's how we present it to you. I will note that there's, that both the Massachusetts House and Senate are voting to increase the regional transportation aid substantially. The Senate actually voted to fund it at 100%, which is what is statutorily required by the legislature's own laws. It hasn't been done yet, but the Senate is proposing that. The House is proposing 90%. Both of those are substantial increases from past funding for transportation. So that's good news in that direction. Article 7, we pay for the town's reserve fund, which is used in cases of unexpected expenditures overseen by the Finance Committee. We have generally assigned $65,000 to that account for any unforeseen expenses that come up in the middle of the year. It does have to go through Finance Committee review, and if approved, the Finance Committee can spend up to $65,000 over the course of the year for any unforeseen expense that would otherwise break someone's budget. Again, that's a standard vote over the years. Another standard vote over the years is Article 8, where the town votes to assign $200,000 from free cash for the purpose of reducing the expected tax rate in fiscal year 2024. We always apply for a grant for our dispatch center, our communications department, and because we serve three towns, we're a regional dispatch center and qualify for a state grant that pays for, I would say, the majority of the operations, the vast majority of the operations of our dispatch, our communications department. If the grant were to go away, we would use this $200,000 to cover those expenses. They come in now at about $160,000, maybe a little more than $160,000. But we expect to get the grant. We usually do get the grant, so this $200,000, we're now free to assign to lowering the tax rate. We do tax people in case we don't get the grant, but then we give it back to the taxpayer when we do get the grant. That's the purpose of Article 8. For Article 9, we usually use some of our free cash for stabilization money, and we have been using stabilization money, and so it's a good thing we're putting some back this year. We're going to be putting money into the capital stabilization fund. We're going to propose $200,000 to that, $150,000 to the sewer stabilization fund, and $100,000 to the general stabilization fund. I'll note that we have voted to use $380,000 from the sewer stabilization fund to pay for half of the work that's being done on Dalton's sewers. We had a study done that identified a number of deficiencies. The total cost is $760,000, and we're paying for half of it through funds that the town received from the federal government through the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act. So that's, we're going partway towards replenishing the sewer stabilization fund for the money that we took out for that purpose, and we'll probably do so for the next several years. Article 10 is using free cash to pay for retiree health benefits. The town, ever since about 10 years ago, towns have been required to include the liability they have for retiree health benefits on their balance sheet, and it's often quite a bit of money. Dalton's liability is on the order of $3.5 million. That said, I'm very pleased to say that for the first time this year, the $300,000 that we're planning thousand dollars that we're planning to ask to go into the fund will quite probably fully fund our retiree health benefits liability. There are very few towns in Massachusetts that have been able to do this, and we will join their, their rare number. We will still have to put money into it because of the rise in healthcare costs over time. Our actuaries tell us that we should count on an increase of about eight percent per year in healthcare costs. So we will still have to pay into the fund, but we will be fully funded, and that will help our credit rating. That's the purpose of Article Ten. Article Eleven, we have one invoice that was received for fiscal year 2022, the year before this one, that was a legal bill for tax title expenses for four hundred fifty It takes a vote of town meeting to spend any money on the town's behalf, including bills that are overdue. So we are asking Town Meeting to fund a bill from a prior year. For Article Twelve, every year, we authorize the Select Board to receive and for Town Meeting to appropriate the money we get from the state for our roads. This is under the state's Chapter Ninety Road Maintenance Program. We usually get about two hundred fifteen thousand dollars a year, and that's what the state gives us for roadwork. It's not a lot of money. We can't get a lot done with it, but we're, we're happy to have an extra two hundred fifteen thousand dollars. So this, this is a motion that, that appropriates that money that we get from the state and, to, to be used in accordance with its purpose, road maintenance. Article Thirteen includes three requests for borrowing. The Finance Committee is recommending that we borrow for three capital items, the three most expensive capital items that the town has. The first is one hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-eight dollars for a loader for the Department of Public Works, one of the biggest pieces of equipment we have. And one of the ones that we have is old and needs to be replaced. This is on the, this has been on their schedule for replacement for some time. Another item is new. It's a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars for repairs to the roof of the town garage. Our public works crew works in a building that has substantial leaks in the roof, and that's not good for them. It's not good for the equipment. These leaks have existed for a number of years, and they've gotten really, from our department's point of view, intolerable. So we're asking for one hundred sixty-one thousand dollars to repair the roof. The other item that we're asking to borrow for is a cruiser for the police department. We usually ask for one each year. These are the regular duty cruisers, and the cost of one fully outfitted this year is sixty-five thousand, nine hundred fourteen dollars. These are large, all-terrain, all-wheel-drive vehicles that are equipped specially for police work, hence the sixty-five thousand, nine hundred fourteen dollar price tag. For Article Fourteen, we're proposing to pay money that we owe the City of Pittsfield for our sewer treatment. We always pay for the prior fiscal year. The estimate for fiscal year 2022 that we were given was below what the actual cost turned out to be. So we're going to ask for nineteen thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars to pay the amount we were billed that went beyond what we budgeted, based on the City of Pittsfield's Article Fifteen starts a number of articles asking for capital equipment. The first item is forty-six thousand dollars for an administrative vehicle for the police department. This is not a full-duty cruiser, but it replaces the vehicle that the chief of police now has for administrative duties, going to trainings, going to court, in and out of, back and forth from, from home to various incidents, if that's required. So it is also a, a very well-equipped vehicle, but it's not equipped to be a full-duty police cruiser. So we're asking for forty-six thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars from the capital stabilization fund for that. So that does not have a direct impact on the tax rate. Of course, we are putting free cash into the capital stabilization fund as well. Free cash is not a direct impact on the tax rate, but it does represent money that we've gotten back, that we did not spend last year. It's a good idea to budget more than you actually need because things generally cost more than you think that they will. And we don't want to have a special town meeting every month to raise more money. So we found what we believe is a good balance between the amount of free cash we have and the amount of capital needs that we need to fund out of that, as well as funding our other stabilization funds. So Article Fifteen is a request for money from the capital stabilization fund for an administrative vehicle for the police department. For Article Sixteen, we would like to spend money from free cash on a pickup truck for the Department of Public Works. Again, that's a vehicle which is, I believe, ten years old and in need of replacement. And an additional ten thousand dollars for sidewalk repairs. I'm sure you, you, you may have seen an article in the Berkshire Eagle recently about Pittsfield sidewalks. There are those who would say that Pittsfield has nothing on Dalton in terms of sidewalks that need work. And the, the problem is always one of, of crew time. Perhaps this extra money will allow more sidewalks to be repaired. That is certainly the intention.
Just a quick, quick question, Tom, real quick. This is going really well. I, I think I accidentally tried to squeeze too much into one night. So if we could, because we have to go into our, our regular Select Board meeting, which we have a couple of items, and then we have to go into an executive session at seven-thirty on another item, so we're kind of squeezing too much in. But I really want to make sure that everybody in the audience that's here tonight has their questions asked and answered before we, before we break. But are there, are there any other questions from the audience at all? We're going to have a really robust conversation. I know a town meeting on a couple of these different things. But Tom, anyone that you, any particular one you want to point out? Sorry, apologies to cut this short. I kind of squeezed too much in.
No, we heard about Article Twenty. There are, there are smaller requests from other departments for capital expenditures. We're asking for an authorization for the Select Board to sign a contract that would last more than five years. This is for more than three years. We need Town Meeting authorization for that, and that's for a program to put in more electric vehicle chargers in town. One of the things that we're asking for is five thousand dollars to be put in a fund in case we need to spend it on people who have to leave their homes because they're being evicted by the town for health purposes. Sometimes these are, the, the, we've almost had to spend money, and we didn't have any, any money to spend on it. So we're asking for a little bit of money at least so that if, if a landlord isn't keeping his property up to speed and we need to condemn the house, the town is on the hook for some relocation expenses. So that's what that five thousand dollars is for.
That's a really, that's going to be a really interesting one for the residents to understand because we're going to start that with five thousand, but such a risk if we condemn a, condemn a home and there's renters in there and the owner of the home can't bring that up to code or up to the conditions required, and that family needs to relocate, becomes a town expense to relocate them safely. It's, it's quite interesting, right? Kind of putting that responsibility on the town and the residents on that particular item. So, but it's the right thing to do. It looks like the state's making, kind of forcing our hands at that as well, so.
And then there's a, a solar project on tap for going in on the old town landfill, and they're looking for an easement across town property to be able to access that property. That, that's, that's a fairly simple one. And then the, the Board and I especially are asking for money for looking at what the town needs long-term in terms of space and whether our current town buildings can satisfy that need, or whether we ought to be looking at leasing, purchasing, building, any other space that we might need for the town. So that study, we estimate, could cost up to twenty-five thousand dollars, but it would give us a roadmap for capital improvements in buildings for the next ten years, probably. So that's, those are the rest of the articles.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Any questions at all from the audience?
Okay. If that, I don't think I need a motion to close. Just kind of go right into the Select Board, right? Okay. I'd like to go ahead and move into our standard Select Board agenda item. And Brittany can do, oh, let me just go ahead and call the order and for all those who, we don't have a flag here. I don't see a flag. You want to still, we'll still rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
And Mr. Esco, we listen to the pledge.
Just picture a nice, beautiful flag. Picture it over there in the corner.
Okay.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you for everybody's imagination of that beautiful flag, so. Okay, Brittany, roll call.
Here.
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 Here. And thank you for everybody who attended that session earlier. Appreciate your, your time and attention to that discussion. Now it's time for public address to the Board. This is a time when the public may address the Board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or in any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the Board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company or institution you represent. Public address to the Board segment will last no longer than thirty minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the Board Chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The Chair or the designated may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the Board discusses an agenda item, please make the request at this time. The Board Chair may grant this request. Address comments to the Board Chair and be concise. We're meeting in person, making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public, since we're meeting in person, will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure, participate, participate, and please attend in person. And with that, we'll move to our first agenda item, which is appointments. Ms. Richardson.
Very pleased to present our current animal control officer, Mr. Leacy, Leacy?
Yes.
As a candidate for reserve dispatcher. He's here with us tonight and as is the Communications Department Director. And if, I, I know that the, the need is there for coverage. It's, it's always difficult to get to staff, a dispatch which is 24/7, and no one can get sick ever. And so I, I think this, this appointment will, will help to solve that problem. I don't know if the Director wants to add any, anything on that.
Come on, sorry, come up on the mic just so folks at home can hear you.
So as you know, Mr. Leacy is the animal control officer, and for the town, that's a 24-hour benefited position. He's looking to pick up more hours. I have more hours, but not on a regular basis. So any 20 hours he works is overtime I don't have to pay out to myself or somebody else. We did this with Mike McClay when he was the ACO, and he was a valuable asset for 10-plus years in dispatch. So it just makes sense. If he's available, he's already working for the town. He knows it's not a regular basis. That's the hardest thing we have is the reserve position is a per diem dispatch, so you may not get any hours for a few weeks, but somebody may be on vacation. I have a full-timer going out on a medical surgery in July. That's why we're trying to put him in there to help us out covering some chefs. So it's, it's perfect because he knows it's not all the time, but it gives him some extra money, and it, it benefits the town. You have an employee that you're paying benefits for. Utilize them to what you can.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
Yeah, just one quickly.
Ms. Boyle.
What happens if he's on duty as a dispatcher and is an emergency animal situation?
Just like if he was not on duty as the animal control officer, the on-duty officers go out and deal with that animal control issue. Because he's not available 24 hour, you know, if he's not on duty and we have an emergency animal control, the officers will go out and deal with that until he can come in.
Do we also have a part-time ACO or, I think, per diem ACO as well?
I think they're, they have one in training. I'm not sure.
Okay, in training?
Yes.
I thought, I thought we pointed like a, a per diem or something a while back. Okay.
And, and a quick follow-up. I assume this doesn't interfere with responsibilities and shifts as the ACO.
No, and that, that's the one thing Chief Strout and I, you know, we talked, I talked with her before I even responded to his, Mr. Leacy's request to work in dispatch, you know. We work well together, and he knows that his hours as ACO are his hours as ACO. Hours in dispatch are hours in dispatch. It's, he, he has to keep them separate, and he understands that.
What will be the effective date? I don't see that on our agenda.
Tom?
I, I think all three of these are effective upon completion of, well, he, he would be effective immediately because he's a current employee. Sorry. Yeah.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Well, I, I still have to write the letter.
Okay.
After, after you get the, the letter.
Any other questions on the Board? Is there a motion?
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any further discussion? Hear it, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations and welcome to the dispatch team. So thank you. And Gabby, thank you for your creative plan in there, so.
Thank you.
Yep, appreciate it. Thank you both. All right, number, Highway Mechanic, Mitchell Drummond, Grade Seven, Step Eight. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, unfortunately, Mr. Drum is actually currently working in Greenfield, but he is in anticipation of being appointed. He has submitted his notice there, but unfortunately, he is working at this time and so is not available. He comes with the high recommendation of our Department of Public Works Superintendent.
Okay, is there a motion?
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Hear it, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Highway Summer Staff, Jonah Smith at Grade One, Step Two, and Bryce Smith at Grade One, Step One. Ms. Richardson. Ms. Richardsonson.
These are brothers. Jonah worked for the department last year and Bryce is his younger brother. Jonah is at college at this moment and Bryce is playing at a lacrosse game. So they're, they are, they're not able to be here. But again, they come well recommended by the, by the DPW head.
But Jonah will not be supervising Bryce, right?
No.
Okay. Just had to ask. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hear or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Great, thank you for those. Moving on to number seven. I see William Pat for the update on the town hall construction. Yeah, come on up and you can use either mic. You can use that one there too, yeah.
Okay, so, does this, okay. So the construction is still going as scheduled, so everything's going good. Abide, the abatement contractor, has been cleaning out everything today. There was a small oversight that I noticed today when they removed all the plastic. They missed one small, I'm going to say three and a half by eight-foot section of plaster that's exposed into the opera house room. So we discussed that. I've called everyone. I've called their boss. I've spoken with the architect and we have come up with the decision. I brought Tom over. We looked at it. We came up with the decision, talked with Abide's boss, their supervisor's boss. What they had was, they had a supervisor who started the job and had to leave due to some personal reasons, not to go to another job or anything like that. So usually when you have one supervisor leave, another one come in, things like this can happen where something gets missed because the other one didn't see it as well. So after he removed the plastic, I saw this small area that nobody had seen before. And so we're talking with everybody. They're going to look at it all tomorrow because we have a construction meeting tomorrow with all the contractors anyways. So we come up with a plan of getting this removed because it is friable, so it can't stay. The bricks that it's next to, those bricks are not in very good condition, so to try and encapsulate it, there's really not going to be a good seal. So I just kind of made the decision that this small area, which will be minimal cost, should be removed. So yes, I do feel it's a mistake on their part because it was never brought to my attention, this section. So I have brought that to their attention, that it is their responsibility, but it does cost money to remove. So we're going to discuss all that tomorrow. This will not cause a delay in the job at all as it is a very small area. Like I said, it's about three and a half by eight feet, almost, probably a little smaller than a sheet rock panel that you would get at Home Depot. So once they remove that, we still have to do a little, small encapsulation of that area just to make sure it stays all sealed as it is a concealed room that was bricked over, so nobody actually could even see this room anyways. So once that gets all taken care of, the electricians, I was talking with them today. They're ready to get in there and start removing the rest of the wiring that needs to be done for the sheet rock to happen. Speaking with Cape Cod builders, they are ready to get their sheet rock people in there. They were working on their submittals today. They probably had 12 to 15 submittals. Only one got rejected and it was just some foam board or something like that. It was buying the wrong thing. So that's an easy fix because there wasn't much of that. So everything seems to be going as planned according to Cape Cod builders, the schedule they gave us. They will complete the work around June 18th. So that would mean everybody, just as what was projected out, can start moving back in in July. So other than that, everything else is going very good except for that one minor detail. And like I said, it should not cause any delays. Everything else has been removed. I walked through, inspected every area they worked at, so everything looks pretty good. That's all.
Any questions?
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pat. On that, on that piece that's missed, is that additional cost to the town or is that included in the current contract?
That was not in the bidded area.
Okay.
But in my professional opinion, it should have been brought to my attention because it was exposed to where you could see it.
Okay. All right, thanks, Pat.
And our construction contingency funds can cover the overage of 50?
Yeah, well, we had contingency for a lot more money than this is going to cost, but in my belief, this was the major extent of, of the project. So to come away with just a minor glitch, I would call it, I think we, we did pretty well.
Excellent job, Pat. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Okay. Number eight, approval of Community Recreation Association Annual Open Day Softball Parade, May 6th, from 8:00 to 8:30. I assume that's in the morning.
AM.
Yeah, AM?
Yes.
Okay. Pretty standard. Is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to allow the CRA Annual Opening Day Softball Parade on May 6th from 8:00 to 8:30.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second, any discussion?
That goes from the senior center up to Pine Grove, is that correct?
That's where traditionally it's gone.
Yes.
Pine Grove or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it's Pine Grove.
Yeah.
Pine Grove, okay.
Not Chamberlain.
Okay. All right, motion, a second, any further discussion? Hear or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Number nine, Declaration to End the State of Emergency Due to COVID Pandemic as of May 11th, 2023. Ms. Richardsonson.
Yes, this was the date set by the federal government and originally by the state government as an official end to the state of emergency due to the pandemic. The, the state may have moved that up, but just to be consistent, I think declaring an end as of that date would be, it would be consistent with the federal government and the original state deadline. That's why I proposed it for that.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to end the state of emergency due to the COVID pandemic as of May 11th, 2023.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hear or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. License approval, livery license for Mr. Richard Hall. Ms. Richardsonson.
Mr. Hall has our first livery license and it's up for renewal. And we've received the fee and all the paperwork's in order, so we recommend approving the license.
Is there a motion?
Some move. Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hear or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And the Hockland Peddler License for Mr. Dingeling, Brian Collins, Barcolis.
Yeah, there was, there's, there's been a little misunderstanding about this. I think it came across our desk, Alyssa's and mine, last year. And we didn't, it was unfamiliar to us. We just looked in the bylaws and we found something where it said the local licensing board approves that. And, and so I, I think we brought it forward last year and had kind of a two-track thing because we hadn't realized at the time the police department also granted a license for that. And I think the best way to go forward is for this board simply to approve the police department's, you know, recommendation for the license. Either that or change the bylaw so it's the police department that grants the license. But when we, when we looked at it last year, we found that the town bylaws have the local licensing board grant the license. So I, at this point, would probably recommend tabling this until we get a recommendation from the police department.
I'll make a recommendation. We approve this pending the police department's approval.
There we go.
Thank you.
That's a good one.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hear or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Town manager update?
Ah, yes. One second, please. Most of my work since our last meeting has been on items on tonight's agenda. There will be a Zoom meeting to go over the motions and explanations document for town meeting tomorrow, after which we should be ready for town meeting. I've also been keeping up with the necessary planning board, conservation commission, and Board of Appeals items. Final contracts have been signed for the Fiber Ring project and we're looking, construction has actually begun. And that's great news. Where, you may recall at the last annual town meeting, we, we voted to expand the purposes of the IT borrowing to cover the, any additional funds for the Fiber Ring. And so at this point, I think that we should use those, those funds for, there, there was that cost overrun that, that we had the board approve from ARPA, a few thousand dollars from that. And there will also be police details as additional funds. And so right now, we're planning, just to use the authorization from last year to, to have that come from one source that's already been approved by town meeting for that. That'll also save us another $4,000 in ARPA funds. I know we cut down the town hall contingency money earlier, so that's, that's the state of the funding and the state of the project. They've already started hanging some things to put the wires on. The wires should be going up soon. They should be calling the police for details tomorrow. And it looks like that's, that's just ready to roll. The guy came up and visited a few weeks ago. I took him on a little tour and we, we identified a number of, you know, interesting points and he, he was all, all good with everything that we'd found. So that's, that's for the Fiber Ring. I did participate in a regional discussion for the electricity aggregation program and the group chose the Dynegy Electricity Service Agreement, that's our current provider, for 24 months to start in January of 2024 with a per kilowatt hour cost of .13849. They will be publicizing this throughout the town soon. Based on select board guidance, the product I chose was a standard retail electric supply at 62% renewable energy. I did note that a three-year, 100% renewable Wameko contract, and most of the group has National Grid, was actually one, one hundred thousandths of a cent less than the two-year product. But the other towns all agreed with Colonial Power that there was cause for optimism that energy prices would continue to come down over the next two years. So people were unwilling to sign on to a three-year contract. Since I was the only holdout for a three-year contract, I went with the group and accepted the two-year contract at .13848. I'm sorry, .13849. And that's all I have now.
Thank you. Any questions for our town manager? Any future agenda items?
Yeah, Joe, for the next, the next meeting, can we have Dan Downer, an approval of the carnival for Thursday, June 1st to Sunday, June 4th? Could you put that on the agenda, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other future agenda items? I'd like to just add that we discuss a policy about legal review of contracts as we move forward as a town.
Yes.
Any other future agenda items? Okay, any items not anticipated 48 hours before the meeting? Hear or none, any remarks to the select board? Hear or none. Announcements, annual car permits, bag stickers, recycling only car permits are available for purchase at the transfer station on the town's website.
Executive move.
The town of Dalton currently has the following job opportunities. Building and ground superintendent. If interested, please visit the town's website or call the town manager's office for more information. There are numerous committees and boards with vacancies. Please see the town website for more information or reach out to the town manager's office. Dalton Police Department would like to remind the citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban, which went into effect on November 15th, 2022, will remain in effect through April 15th, 2023. There's no parking on streets between 1:00 a.m., 6:00 a.m. Is your electricity bill too high? The town has contracts with Colonial Power to provide an electricity plan for town residents that takes advantage of joining with other communities to have a larger customer base for negotiations, which has resulted in prices significantly lower than current ever-sourced prices. Please note, this may not always be the case. For more detail or to opt in or opt out, visit the town's website or call the town manager's office. Dalton Housing Authority is seeking volunteers to fill two-day consits on its board. Must be a resident of Dalton. Please call 413-684-1470 for more information. The annual town meeting, the annual town meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, May 1st at 7:30 p.m. at Wakona Regional High School. The next select board meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 8th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. at the senior center with an option for remote participation. And kind of motion to move to executive session and not return to open session.
Some move. Second.
Okay, motion, a second. The purpose of the movement to executive session, anticipate executive session in accordance with general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to discuss the physical condition, oh, I'm sorry, that one moved up to an earlier session. Let me, sorry, I'm going to go back to what we adjusted. Yes, executive session, reason three, discuss strategy with respect to litigation, which may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares. That's number one. And number two is anticipate executive session in accordance with general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel. So with that, roll call, vote to move to executive session?
Yes.
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 Yes, and please note Mr. Boyle is absent. Thank you. And with that, motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And thank you to our Wakona team and Dalton Community TV for hanging in with us tonight.